Today is Wednesday, December 11, 2013. The time is 10:02. The meeting of the Montague County Commission is called to order. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag? Thank you.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Diane.
Consent approval today. We have exoneration. There are eight, 11 listings, 5,009, 4873, for tax shares, 2010, 11, 12, and 13. Fiduciary orders as of December 11. And you have an estate of hairy elf feathers for consideration of assignment to a fiduciary commissioner minutes of November 20. Purchase orders and pay vouchers, General County Fund, 256,40804. Cole Severance Fund, 14,750. Mason Dixon Park, 48620. Chestnut Ridge Park, 3,85922. Camp Monthly, 3,0053326. Assessors Valuation Fund, 11,750. Home Confinement, 11,37294. Morgan County Industrial Park, TIFF, 1,08592. A total of 303, 24558. And I have one budget revision from the sheriff's office for account number 705, Home Confinement.
Move for approval except for the fiduciary orders. You should probably do that separately.
Second.
Have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, the fiduciary order. That was an assignment to fiduciary commissioner request? The fiduciary order, he wanted to do that separately. Can you explain that in more detail?
This is to, because there were some questions on the estate. It's requesting that be referred to a fiduciary commissioner. It doesn't matter which one, the clerk's office will do that.
What they do when someone submits some documents and someone raises an objection, in this particular case, the objection had to do with whether all the assets were properly accounted for in the inventory and appraisal. We refer to a fiduciary commissioner. The fiduciary commissioner does all the initial evidence taking and everything, and based on the presentation, the evidence, everything, then comes back and make a recommendation. Once they get that recommendation, once we get that recommendation, then they also have a right to object before us. We don't take any additional evidence, but we then make a decision either to adopt the recommendation or to modify the recommendation to the fiduciary commissioner.
Okay. Then I so move that we refer. I apologize for the name.
That's okay.
Hairy feathers.
Hairy feathers to fiduciary commissioner.
Second.
Have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Vanessa.
Double duty today.
Yeah.
Okay, she will be in a little bit later. This is the Emergency Solutions Grant for October 2013, the amount of $4,220.01 for signature. The Boca Request for Reimbursement, November 2013, $3,009,159. And also the David Port Center Request for Reimbursement, $18,008,1888.
Move for approval of reimbursement.
Second.
Have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. At least she didn't leave you stuck at high, or sometimes she has. Thank you. Okay, the discussion of the status proposal interchange interstate 79, I got a call probably about a half hour ago advising that that collaboration agreement between the county commission and the Department of Transportation still is 95% done, but still has like 3% of tweaks that have to be completed after a meeting yesterday with DOT. And we, they think it's better to have it totally complete before they come in and make the presentation. So we pulled that from the agenda. Okay, correspondence, state auditor engagement letter for audit.
This is our standard letter on what they will be doing performing during their audit panel. The cost this year is going to be $39,650. And Mary Stern is our auditor. She started Tuesday, yesterday.
We don't need to do anything with this, do we?
Sign this.
This is just information that we've received.
So it's nothing wrong, you sign it because you.
We received it, yeah. Well, this is only going to take place for, what, one more meeting?
I don't know. We haven't voted yet.
Thank you. Okay, that sets up the audit. Do we have any further correspondence?
Yes, I have a request from Citizens Bank to partially release $30,000 of the securities that are being pledged. And there still remains 1,145,000 in securities pledged for the account. The only thing that goes through the citizens' account, I believe, is for Jean Friend.
This is what fund?
Jean Friend.
Oh, okay. And how much is that fund normally running?
Well, they're reducing it by 30,000, so it's 1,175,000. So there's still a million there, but that's way more than we need for Jean Friend's account.
And that's just to secure it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Any further correspondence?
No.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business, purchase order process.
We, I guess I'll take the lead on this. We discussed that in work session. And it, after being hashed around, it seems like the best approach to this is the county commission really doesn't have any need to review these purchase orders because budgets, once they're approved and given to the constitutional offices, have control over their expenditures. So we can't really tell anyone what they can spend for and what they can't. So it's just an effort and futility, shuffling paperwork. But there seemed to be some concern by some offices that they wanted to maintain them because it helped them with accountability of their expenditures and purchases. So it seems like we've worked our way around, and I think during the work session, you said it best, as to how we should, if you can recall. I can attempt to sort of restate what you said during our work session, but I think the commission can discontinue the review of those purchase requests. And if an individual department wants to maintain them for their own records, then so be it. There's no problem with that. But just as wholesale procedure of all these purchase requests for no intended reason, good reason, or valid reason, to come through this commission, have to go through them and review them serves no purpose for anyone, except consumes time that's wasted. Anything to add?
Yeah. The auditor office advises us that there is no statutory requirement or need to have purchase orders. It's entirely up to adopting the type of internal controls that are necessary. And as Commissioner Bartolo said, that the controls we have on the other departments is that we set their budgets. But once we give them their budgets, and their budgets per line item, they are free to apply, to move that around as they deem necessary. Then each expenditure that an invoice is sent out, and they can spend that as they choose. That's the constitutional legal statutory scheme, the way it works. So to handle stacks of paper to come up through here, we find it's a waste of ink and a waste of paper and a waste of manpower. So yes, what I think that we've reached, we had a meeting with all the constitutional officers last week at the work session, was that as a county, we were going to do away with the demand or need for purchase orders. However, we're going to leave it up to the individual constitutional officer to use purchase orders for their own internal controls as they see fit. So that our position, once we have a motion on this, will be that purchase orders are no longer necessary. And if a constitutional officer wants to keep purchase orders for now, but then finds another way, they won't have to come back here, they can just make the change on their own. So I think, I think I recalled basically what I stated to all the constitutional officers.
Even refresh my memory, that is exactly what you said.
That's right. So what I need, Tom, you want to add anything?
No, I think you two have done fine. I'll be quiet on this one.
Okay. So what I need is a motion to do away with use of purchase orders in Montague County with the right of each constitutional officer to use purchase orders in their departments for their own internal control as they seem fit.
I would so move, and I'll second.
Have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. What's that?
Effective immediately?
Yes. Effective adopted today.
I just voted.
Yes.
Right now. If you're filling out a purchase order, you're not doing it for us anymore. Okay. Okay, holiday office closures. Do you have that code section? I asked you to make a copy of.
Good.
Well, we've never had difficulty in the past over this. Everyone's always respected the county commission's right to open and close a courthouse as they see fit. We have a little issue here, and we're going to deal with it. And we're not there on the county, a number of other counties are closing all day.
Thank you.
Okay. I refer the two commissioners to West Virginia Code 221, discussing legal holidays, official acts or court proceedings, in particular, paragraph C, list all the legal holidays. But under paragraph C, it states that in part, the governor may designate any day or part of day as time off without charge against accrued annual leave for state employees statewide. And it may also be time off for county employees if the county commissioner elects to designate the day or part thereof as time off without charge against accrued annual leave for county employees. Any entire or part statewide day off designated by the governor may for all courts be treated as if it were a legal holiday. So on the first part of this issue is that the state employee manual adopted by the governor and applied by the governors to all state agencies, including the West Virginia Supreme Court and all the courts, is that the, a half a day before, on Christmas Eve, that means starting 12 o'clock on Christmas Eve, and a half a day on New Year's Eve is a legal holiday, and it's a legal holiday for the county employees if this county commission adopts that half day as a legal holiday, which means we have full authority to close the courthouse. And we may have already done that, but I wanted to make sure, have full authority to close the courthouse starting 12 o'clock, and that includes all the courts. The second part of this that was brought up, and I want to emphasize that regardless of what was written or said, this county, this county commission has never, has never thought or never has adopted a legal holiday for the other three hours that we're talking about. Let's be clear about that. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about three hours. What we have done is we have, which it has been recognized both the federal courts and the state courts, the county commission has authority to grant additional time off. We chose to grant it the last year, and I think maybe some years previously, and I know other counties grant additional time off. My primary reason, the other commissioners can speak for themselves, my primary reason is it's the most unproductive time, with my management background and experience, most unproductive time that you can have. It costs a lot of money to open these courthouses, a lot of money, and it's a waste of taxpayer money to open up for the most unproductive times. And again, I'm talking about from 9 to 12. The fact that the courts, the chief judge wants the courts to be open a half day, and that's all she can do, she can't make it longer than that, because the courthouse will be closed at noon on New Year's Eve and Christmas Eve. We have that power and authority. The, because, and I've read all the case law dealing with this, including the federal case, some federal cases on this, because of the separation of powers issue, the chief judge can say the courts are open for those three hours, and we have to provide just that section for the courts. Again, because of separation of powers, the chief judge has no authority over how the other constitutional officers and this commission operates and treats its employees. My background, both training and education and experience in management tells you one important factor, that money is the poorest motivator there is. The best motivator there is, is additional time off and recognition. And we recognize that this commission has been an extremely active, hardworking commission, and we recognize that all the departments, and we work very closely with all the elected officials in all the departments, and we appreciate the work of the elected officials and their departments and their employees, is that as co-employees, we met last week and decided that we will, we will be closing the courthouse but for the magistrate building, and I'm talking from 9 to 12, the magistrate building where the courts are there and the probation, the state people, and the main entrance of the main courthouse and the handicap access. So all the other doors will be closed that morning from 9 till 12, except those two entrances. So they can come in, again, because of the separation of powers issue, that she can't tell us what to do, we can't tell her what to do. But if we're going to spend this money to open that courthouse, I expect her to be in her office. I guarantee you that. Because that takes a lot of money to open a courthouse and a lot of people, but I expect the courthouse to be closed at noon, and we're just going to open it for those two areas. We have the full power and authority to do that. We've never run into a problem before. It's where this came from, or why, when it's done throughout the state, in many other counties, and never been questioned, from a case that actually was dealing with dictum. It was never, it was, it was said, it was never even, the county commission wasn't even a party to it, to make this issue, but the chief judge is partially correct in that there is a separation of powers. And we cannot order her to close the courts beyond what the governor has stated, even though the Supreme Court never even challenged the governor last year, when he closed everything down, under the same argument, the Supreme Court could use the same argument, but the Supreme Court chose not to challenge the governor. So that, I think we probably need to make a motion to that effect, that the, all the courthouses will be closed on New Year's Eve and Christmas Eve at 12 o'clock promptly, that only the magistrate court building and the main courthouse with entrance and exit limited to the front door and, front door and the handicap access to the main courthouse, that we have limited security and limited, well, security is necessary, but you limit security because you're going to have the rest of it locked, and limited maintenance, and that it be closed promptly at 12 o'clock. Do you have a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing.
Yes, sir.
Is that period of time from 9 to 12 on Christmas Eve day, it is, this commission's intent, correct me if I'm wrong, that these offices will be closed for a full day. Maintenance will be closed for a full day. The adoption center will be closed for a full day. The other constitutional officers that house in the courthouse, at their discretion, whether they're going to be open or not, we can't dictate to them to close their office for that morning.
I think most of us advise us they might close.
But we would encourage them to consider closing their offices as well, and I don't think that violates any statute or code or direction by the chief judge.
My understanding from our meeting last week is that all of the other constitutional officers agreed with this action and ask us to take.
I think the only complicating factor we had was the circuit.
Jean Friend, and she has to, she has to decide how she's going to do it. I understand she might have a limited person, one person in there.
But I will make a motion to that effect.
I'll second, if I could also just say something too. I agree with President Callen. This is, I mean, it's probably one of the most unproductive times, and I think when the three of us talked, we really felt that more would get done on Monday, knowing that Tuesday they would be getting off. Also, and something we had also talked about, I think that we need to make public too, is this was done before internet computers.
Oh, yeah.
And what we had realized.
Partly filing.
Yeah, what we realized, that the filing part is still open. You can file online. So therefore technically, you could be closing physically the building, but you were still allowing, you know, opportunity for individuals. And that's why I think.
That case was irrelevant, and prosecutor pointed that out.
And I think that's important too. And then just finally, I just want to say, you know, I've been called a lot of things, but Scrooge is not going to be one of them. I just really feel that, you know, what you said is, this is not a monetary, but to give the families, more time to be with their families is a benefit that is rare, and that's what we're doing. So I look forward to voting for this.
Have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, courthouse hours of operation. What are we talking about here?
Well, go ahead. Yeah, I'll get it started. One of the concerns we have heard from numerous people who work in the courthouse is the problem that we have people walking around the building after hours. Now, that's either because there've been meetings, and then, you know, the doors are left open and anyone can walk in. We've had problems where the doors aren't shut all the way, people walked in. We had that one minor incident after hours, but the bottom line was that there was a real concern about making sure everything was equitable. And what had happened, or could happen, is that there's no security in there, so if people are going through records and things are misplaced, filed, or walk around to another part of the building, we have no control on that. And it became a fair and equitable access for whether the person was going to be in the records room, whether they wanted to have same access to any other resources in the building. And that's where we run into a problem, and it's a concern that was not only voiced by the employees. In fact, coming today, several people thanked us because they'd get here early, and there were people walking around because the door was open and someone was walking through, and they were concerned about it. So that's why we were trying to make it fair and equitable and limited, so that right now, not only are we looking, I mean, we have the hours of our building certain time, but on Mondays, we're even looking to address meetings so that people want to use the courthouse. We had security till 7 o'clock and not going afterwards. So that was the concern that was brought out, and I'll throw that out to start with.
Well, this is, you know, anytime you have a practice and you try to change that practice, the people that are engaged in it are not going to be really happy. And it's not an easy task to evaluate, should you or should you not change that practice. The one thing, before we get on, one of the things I'd like to do is deviate a little bit from our schedule.
Yes.
After we get a discussion here, and there are attorneys in the audience, and I'd like to give the attorneys a chance to comment on this before we make a motion or take a vote. But what really has driven this is security. Safety and security of the people in the courthouse. One of the things Tom alluded to, an incident, called it a minor incident, I don't know if you would call it a minor incident when property is damaged and equipment is stolen. You know, that really brings to light in terms of situation, if someone had been in the courthouse working, would there have been a more serious incident with the individual that broke in? Because as I understand, he was under the influence and wasn't the most cooperative. So what would have happened? Let's just say, what would have happened if this individual would have harmed or hurts a person that was working in the courthouse after hours? Would the county commission be at risk, being that they provided no security when we provide all of our security during the day when people were in this courthouse? And I'm not an attorney, but having several years in the security field, I mean, other states have experienced certainly liability lawsuits. When you're aware of a condition, don't do anything to prevent someone from getting hurt or harmed, then you become liable if you don't implement steps to correct it. One of the things that we looked at and discussed is that we beefed up security during the day in the courthouse. We converted part-time positions to full-time positions. It cost taxpayers several dollars to do that. We've been pressed by circuit judges to increase enhanced security in the courthouse. One of the things that Montague County has been very fortunate in that we have never had to experience sophistication in terms of someone coming in at night and planning something that happens in the daytime. We have cameras. Anyone that knows anything about security and surveillance cameras knows that it'll help you discover after the fact, but it doesn't prevent anything, except for those people who are usually honest to begin with. You know, locks keep honest people honest, they don't keep dishonest people honest. So cameras are not going to ensure safety. All they're going to do is aid in the discovery of someone who perpetuates the crime. When you, when you look at the list of the attorneys that come into use, the county clerk's office, there's a total of 30. As I understand it, Montague County has about 400-plus attorneys in it. Could we accommodate all attorneys coming in after hours and on weekends? Absolutely not. Do we want to beef up security and keep the facility open during evening hours and on weekends for attorneys to come in and review those records? You know, that has to be a factor that this commission has to weigh, because I don't think we have any choice. If we don't keep the regular hours of the courthouse firm, and only firm, then we don't have any choice but to provide security during off regular hours for anyone who's entering the courthouse. And that'd be the evening or the weekends. Now, I think if we do that, we're getting into several thousands of dollars to provide coverage for people to gain access to review records. You'll get, you'll get a chance to come in.
I'll recognize you when we get there.
Now, there's opposing arguments, you know, and I wish Carrie was here, because I know that it helps Carrie in terms of the congestion in her office during the daytime hours. And I know all attorneys don't do properties, and although there's other people that go in there and. other people that go in there and, and utilize those, those facilities to research the records other than attorneys. Uh, it's a tough call. Uh, one of the things that it brought to mind, you know, I worked in the federal prison system and did some security audits, and I can recall going into a federal institution one time and doing a security audit, and the inmates were given a key to a greenhouse that staff didn't have a key to. And the reason they did it is because it was convenient. It wasn't because it was a necessity, it was because it was convenience. Uh, now, the person that, that, in terms of the inmates, the inmates, it was, it was convenient for them because then they didn't have to go hunt up a staff member. But the staff didn't know when an inmate would be in there. Now, we can look at cameras and we can review cameras and we can, we can, for accountability, but, uh, and this is no reflection on anyone in this room, but there are attorneys locked up. There are attorneys that are in jail. Uh, there are attorneys that are radical. And when it comes to security, you have to take precautions that prevents lack of accountability. Not that anyone's gonna do it, but you have, that's security. Security conscious is to, you know, you, you deal with procedures, not personalities. And, and I think that's where we ended up with on this issue, is, is, and it's a tough call. And that's one of the reasons why I suggested that we give the attorneys a chance to comment on it, because you may have a perspective that we haven't really even considered, although I can tell you that Eldon has represented you very well in this issue, uh, through discussions. And, uh, I don't know, I'm, I'm still open, but, but I'm, I'm leaning towards, uh, security's gotta take the priority. I mean, we did it with the increase in part-time to full-time. The sheriff is here, you know, I, I'd like to give the, you know, after the attorneys have a chance to comment, I'd like to give the sheriff a chance to comment.
Sure, certainly. Um, I, I, I'll just make a couple, couple quick comments, uh, and that's consensus of the commission that deviate from our normal process and allow affected parties to, to speak to the issue. Um, one of the things that, that I emphasized, was that attorneys or officers of the court in that clerk room is, is an important valuable asset to the attorneys who use the clerk room, uh, as the clerk or this county commission knows it, is every property owner. And, uh, and I understand, you got crooked people in anything, but, uh, generally, the, the profession is, consists of honorable, honorable, hardworking people that are, as I said, committed to that clerk room as being extremely valuable, uh, and important asset. Uh, I think there's also cameras down there, so if anyone goes messing with books, they, they can be detected and they can be prosecuted. Um, uh, the, the other thing, uh, that I have a grave difficulty on, uh, on making this change, and I, and I appreciate the, the security and the liability. Uh, and, and that is that I have personally taken advantage of this privilege. And, and if I'm no longer a commissioner at some time in the future, I may wanna take advantage of this again. So that sort of puts me in the spot that, that it might be, it, it might rise to the level that I shouldn't vote on this at all because it, it's a personal, I have a personal interest in it as being an attorney myself. Uh, but, but I don't, I don't think it really rises to that, that level at, at this point. Uh, because I, I, I firmly believe that the, uh, attorneys, maybe what we need to do is in, in, increase the evaluation of the attorneys that we're given access to, either by doing background checks or something like that, uh, if, if there's a concern, uh, in terms of the security of the, the records from the attorneys themselves. The liability issue's a little bit more difficult, and maybe I'd like the sheriff to speak to that as, as he talks about, about that issue. Uh, but I, 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 I think everyone knows where I'm leaning. I, 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 I just, I, I just can't support it. I, I, I think the, the attorneys, for the reasons I stated, uh, they need to be in there. Uh, I know, I've worked on, on, on projects that I go down there and I spend hours just trying to get a hold of one book, uh, because someone's had it all, uh, um, has it to themselves and can't get a hold of it. And so, it's not only a convenience, but in many cases, it's a necessity for the attorneys to be able to get in that, in that clerk's room, go through and, uh, evaluate the, the documents, do the title searches and the other things they need to do at a time that they're not gonna be interrupted by a thousand, uh, land transaction people looking up gas stuff that nine times out of 10, they only half know what they're doing. And, uh, as I said before, you know, most, most attorneys charge by the hour. And, uh, you know, I hate, I hate to charge a client five hours for doing something because I spent four hours waiting on a book, uh, when, when I could do the same thing in, uh, an hour after hours. So I think everyone knows where, where I'm, I'm, I'm on that, on this. I, I still, I, I still would like to think about how we would do with that, deal with the liability and the security issue. Uh, I, I don't think, uh, stopping the attorney, after our attorney access is, is the right solution. I would like to, from the attorneys that, uh, that would like to speak, or others that would like to speak on this issue, I, I would like you to also address not only your individual concern, but, but any suggestions you have as how we deal with the very important security issues that, that have arisen, that a lot of us never even thought about until after 9/11. I mean, after 9/11, everything sort of blew up and, uh, and it's gotten worse and worse and worse. So, I, I appreciate and respect, uh, the other commissioners' thoughts on this. Uh, so I'm gonna open this up, uh, to any, uh, anyone that would like to speak on this. Uh, would you please, uh, once I, uh, recognize you, please stand, give your name, uh, and, uh, your, your name, address, what else you need, Janet? Just name's good enough? Name, oh, you have addresses on all the, oh, well, that's because she knows who you, she knows you, okay. All right, if you'd just rise and give your name for the record, we'd appreciate it. Uh, Ms. Purdy?
Steve Prentice from Bowles Rice. I'd like to begin by pointing out that I'm commenting today as a holder of one of the 30 keys on the list, because I received a text message last night telling me that this hearing was gonna take place. And when I made inquiry to all of the attorneys I know this morning who I could reach, none of them were given any notice of this hearing. We're here because somehow word got out and it immediately spread, as evidenced by the fact that I ran four blocks to get here. Um, before we can address your specific comments, I think that we need some clarification from the panel, because from what I heard, to varying degrees, the concerns are, how are you going to protect us from people breaking into the courthouse? How are you going to protect the courthouse and its assets from us? And what are the potential risks? And it seems to me.
That's all three.
That in the context of these three competing interests, there are various other solutions of a Lestrachanian nature which could be implemented and which are commonly implemented as a fallout of September 11th and everything that's happened since then. I can only speak to my time practicing in this county, which begins with my employment with Mr. Fusco in 1989 and continues to the present. But until the implementation of the current electronic key system, our office had a key to the courthouse. I think I still have mine. The locks were changed when this system was put in place. We are on an honor code. We are sworn, we pay for our keys, we have to agree to the terms and conditions. I have not seen a single abuse of that system since we went to the electronic system. So to the extent that there are concerns held by this county commission, I'd like to hear them in slightly more detail, because I think that we can propose some solutions to address them, which don't go to the level of materially impacting our ability to serve the people of this community. And as I'm sure everyone here will tell you, I used mine one time last year. I used it because a local municipality was planning on cutting down a number of trees and tearing down someone's retaining wall. I found out about it at 10 o'clock on a Wednesday night. I think it was Wednesday. You know, Bobby called me the next day, because Bobby saw I was there. Because I had record room access at night, I was able to prevent a travesty. It is difficult to imagine such a thing as a real estate emergency, but they do happen. And I would also ask you, when you're discussing your needs to protect us, to consider one fact, which is, as I look at the attorneys here, those records are the only thing that separate every single real estate attorney in this room from probably a hundred million dollars worth of personal liability. We have a greater vested interest in that room than any single member of this community, and I would say this court, our whole lives are wrapped up in that room. We are the guardians of that room. And the attorneys who brief that go to jail. It's well documented. So could you please explain to us more about how you need to protect us and protect the records and protect the court?
Thank you. Uh, yes, Mr. Allen?
I'm Dan Oliver. I am also one of the holders of the 30 keys. I use that service a lot. I appreciate it, actually. Uh, and I use it to help my clients. It's not, it's not for Dan Oliver that I've got that key, it's for my clients, it's the members of the public. And yes, we are officers, officers of this court. We take it very seriously. I don't know of any problems that we've had, uh, since we've been using this service. Uh, we, we, we treat that room and its records with honor. Now, unfortunately, I came in a little bit late, so I'm not sure all the things that you had to say, Mr. Bartzolo. But if, if you're saying that attorneys should not have access to this courthouse after hours, I, I'm wondering if you are, if you're also saying that about the prosecutor attorney and its staff? Can they come in at night and work on their cases? The judges, can they come in and work on their cases or their staff, their law clerks? Uh, I think they have the same risks of somebody breaking into the courthouse and harming them. Also, in terms, in terms of liability exposure for the commission, uh, we could be asked to sign some waiver, uh, about that. I think, uh, I'm seeing some nods that Dave Cavan and so forth, I'd sign a waiver, it, it doesn't bother me. And also, that's why you have liability insurance. That's exactly why you buy insurance. Uh, and you've got plenty of it, I'm sure. So I, I think this is blown up into some, uh, larger matter than it should be. There are other ways to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cavan?
A few, one was, I was going to suggest a whole harmless agreement, that we do take on the risk ourselves, and there is some risk. When I first started practicing, I had a, I was working in Chawston, and I had a key to the Canal County Record Room. And they have a very long, dim hallway to get to the records. And, you know, you have street people outside. And, uh, yeah, it crossed my mind that I don't like the dimness of these hallways, but I take that risk. Um, in all honesty, with the oil and gas folks, it's bedlam during the day down there. And if I make a mistake, if I can't concentrate, then I'm guilty of malpractice. And the fact is, I seldom use it during the day. I use it on weekends. I come in at six o'clock in the morning. Uh, sometimes I stay in the evenings. Generally, I'm too tired when I come in at six in the morning to stay in the evenings. Honestly, I have never seen anyone in the hallways when I've been here other than the folks who are employed to keep the place clean. Now, the minor incident, and I may be wrong, the rumor I had was they came through the downstairs door. The attorney's key only works over here off of Chancery Road. And we are instructed, you do not leave by any other door than the door your key operates. And I'm aware that you have cameras that can see if I would go out a door. And believe me, Carrie Blaney rides very hard on if you screw up, you use, you lose your card privileges. So, we are very cognizant of that fact. Um, you know, there's statements, there's too many problems and concerns. I, I, I've not heard of any instances other than, from what I gather, the tax office did get broken into. But that was via the downstairs door. Uh, I think that's employees of this courthouse who have the key to that door, not, not the attorneys. And I would also mention that there seems to be a belief that this is something that only is Mon County, that we're the only ones who have the keys. Uh, Marion County and Preston County have key privileges, although I could never get a key to Preston County because I'm not a Preston County lawyer, even though for 35 years, I've done title work in Preston County. Same with Marion County. They won't, I can't obtain a key because I'm not part of their bar. But Canal County has key privileges. I, I think, as Steve said, I think we can address your issues of security, but I hate to see you throw the baby out with the bathwater. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mitch Brozick with Secure U.S. I'm actually here for another matter, but there's a lot of ways that you can protect this facility electronically, by, even by the door down in the, that was, it was used improperly, vis a vis your access control system. The door opens, it sends a trigger, it sends an alarm to someone, either in 911 or the sheriff's office. If you see somebody leaving or entering improperly, it can be dealt with almost immediately. There's perimeter protection that you can put to cover glass areas in different rooms at ground level, that you can only let your authorized people in. And the same thing, you've got an honor code, but you can beef up the cameras in the areas where these guys are allowed, put a card reader inside and out, so that you have directed days, times, and the amount of time they spend in the room, you can get a better understanding of who is where at what time and what goes on to help you save from having to, uh, supply officers or any other personnel at the time. It's just a thought.
Thank you, sir. Any, yes, Christine?
Christine Wong. Um, I am one of those with the access key, and, um, I also can speak, because I do residential as well as oil and gas. And a lot of times, I have emergency titles to do for various attorneys around town. And so I come early, 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning. I stay late, I come on weekends. And being the only female in this group, uh, maybe I could say that I'm more at risk for being attacked. Um, I've never had a problem. I've been here till 10, 11 o'clock at night on weekdays, on weekends. If I'm ever nervous, I call somebody to meet me, or the sheriff's department is right there, I can call one of them to come escort me to my car. Um, I always park on Chancery when I'm here after hours, so I can come right into the door right there. I've never had a problem, and I never see anybody else here except for one of these guys. I mean, nobody, and one of the cleaning people.
You're not frightened?
Yeah, there are some that I'm scared of. But, but it's deserted. There's no one here. It doesn't matter what time you come. In the morning, it's usually Dan and Dave and I, you know? And, and let me tell you something. Being here in the morning and being here during the day, you do have to wait for the index books. You have to wait for the copier. It's ridiculous. A lot of times, it's so noisy that you can't even concentrate and figure out what you're doing. I mean, it's our livelihood, and it is so important to us. You know, we, we need this access. It's not just because, you know, we wanna come in and, and off-hours and do some extra work. I mean, we need to be in here, and, and it's really going to affect our ability to do our jobs.
Thank you, Christine. Any, any, yes, sir, Ms. Berryman?
Robert Berryman. Uh, I'm also a key holder, and I use the record room in the evenings and on the weekend. I'm also a key holder, and I use the record room in the evenings and on the weekends. I don't want to repeat, and I've agreed with everything that the other attorneys have said, so I don't want to repeat that, but the analogy that, and I'm speaking more generically, the analogy that we're going to talk about how things operate in a prison and how things operate in a public building. Just as a society, we've moved so far to the extreme in security and protection and, you know, I still walk around courthouses where there's absolutely nothing, no security at all. And so there's a whole range of things that can be done, hyper secure and no security at all. I thought with the key card, you know when I come in, you know when I go to the record room, you know when I walk out of the record room, and you know when I leave the building. I thought that was a pretty good system for keeping track of people that were coming and going. And so the idea that we need to be more hyper secure because we had one incident, and there were maybe other incidents to a lesser degree, that same incident could have happened right out on the courthouse square. Any of us could have been injured out on the courthouse square. There's no such thing as absolute security, we just have to try to figure out if there's a way that we can meet your valid concerns and yet not severely affect my ability to make a living. Because this will adversely affect my ability to make a living. I'm a one-man operation. I can't be in the record room and in my office doing the things that I need to do. I spend my days in the office dealing with client matters, I come to the record room in the evenings and on the weekends. And so this is going to be a blow that I will not recover from. I'm just one man, but that's my personal stake in this matter.
Thank you, sir. Any further? Any further? Yes, yes, Mr.?
I had concluded by asking some questions.
Okay, I was just wanting, everyone, I was going to address those. I was just waiting for, make sure everyone had, because maybe three or four others had some questions too, and I wanted to address all the questions at once.
For clarification, what you're hearing from us is clear. I don't do the kind of work I did 20 years ago like many of my brethren do. But I ran here for this hearing because it is that important to people I care about. We'd like to know what your concerns are, and the reason is this, and I called Debbie and I told her this. In order for us to help find a solution, there has to be a cost-benefit analysis and evaluation of all of the pertinent facts. The ones that you have presented to us, as I see them, and I'd like you to speak to, are this. There's obviously concern with regard to the security of this institution, the judges and the staff. Shorter running background checks before we hand out these keys. I don't know that there's any way that you can tell when somebody is lucid today and not going to be lucid tomorrow. What I do know is in the last 20-something years, I have seen attorneys carry any variety of weapons into courtrooms with the knowledge of even federal marshals. And when I say that, I think of a former prosecutor here who used to carry a switchblade as a letter opener, and used to go in and out of Judge Stamps' courtroom every single day with it, and the justices just laughed because they knew he was there for a reason. When you speak of assumption of risk, I will tell you, I have never been accosted in this courthouse or felt unsafe in this courthouse. I've been accosted on the street outside trying to get in and out and trying to get in and out of my car. It is infinitely safer in here than outside. When you speak of liability of the records, I believe I've addressed that previously. And everything that we have is currently digitized after 1986. Everything before that is clearly at risk, but as noted, if I'm a private citizen and something happens in that room, all I've got to lose is my house. I've got to lose 25 to 100 times more than that because I'm a property lawyer. But more than anything else, please bear in mind that we went to this system because there was a fire in the courthouse. The fire occurred on the third floor in the judge's chambers, and we were told that we went to this system because we needed to know who was in the courthouse at any given time because of potential liability and risk. We want to help solve your problems. If you can help us understand them so we can come up with solutions that are mutually beneficial, that won't destroy my practice, but will destroy the practices of people I care about. And the net effect of all of this, which somebody needs to say, is if you look at legal fees in this community, in this state, in the last 100 years, the guys who do the property, we're at the bottom of the barrel, and we have gone up virtually nothing compared to the CPI increases over the last 20 years. It's because we work ourselves to death for the consumers. And the only way we can do that for the consumers, and the only reason, Dave Cavendish, what are you charging for a deed?
For a deed?
Yeah.
$125 for a deed?
And what were you charging 25 years ago?
$75.
Enough said. The only reason we can continue to do this for the moms and the pops and the people with the babies and the kids who need us is because we can take of our own personal time and do the work and not charge them for it. And if you limit us to eight hours a day, we're just going to have to start eliminating people and not be able to help them this way. And the prices are going to have to go up.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the body?
I would like to address one other issue, and again, trying to address your concerns. I know on this copy of the emails that I think were between Mr. Bloom and you.
Yeah.
There was statements about the people in the assessor's office or in the county clerk, there are people milling outside. This place opens at 8:00 a.m. Right now, the record room opens at 8:30. As a holder of a key, I would love for the record room to not open until 9:00 because that gives me 30 more minutes to concentrate before the oil and gas people come in and start talking about the party they went to, which is constant, social, social. They're not professional, for the most part. I won't say all of them, but it is an issue. And if there are folks milling around in the hallway in the morning, I think the real issue is the doors to this place are open at 8:00 a.m. And before that, they're locked, and I don't see, unless they have a key, how they can be in the hallways milling around. And the evening, I don't know. I mean, I know you use this building for public meetings, and we don't have any control over that, but I'm just trying to address that one issue of a complaint that there's people at the doors. If that's in the morning, it's because you opened this building up.
Okay. I have a number of things that people want us to address, and we will address them. Any further comments? I want to read this email from Chris Barnum, then I'll go to the commissioner. Eric London and I are not able to attend the 10:00 a.m., 12:00, 11:30 meeting to voice our disapproval of taking away attorneys' access to the record room after hours. We are officers that a court should have the right to enter the courthouse after hours just as the judges have the right to access the courthouse after hours. This procedure has worked for many, many years without incidents involving attorneys. Please reconsider, there are some attorneys who depend on this access thing.
I'll give the sheriff one to carry.
Oh, yes, that's right. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, Sheriff, you?
I'm glad I'm carrying a gun.
Do you need a lawyer, just in case?
I have work to keep an eye on.
All right, well, you've got your back.
I guess I'm going to be booed. I have to look at this, obviously, from a point of security, and I know that's what we're looking at. And I know that the comments have been made so far as, well, we don't fear for our security. Well, that's okay, but the problem is, the county has liability. And I understand this has been going on for years and years, it's probably been going on longer than I've been here, and that's 36 years. So my point is, you know, we hear, well, nothing's ever happened, nothing's ever happened. Well, tell the folks that in the Georgia courthouse where they had an attorney shot outside the courthouse and officers killed. Talk about the wheeling, federal building being shot up and stuff. And all we're trying to do is, we're not trying to affect somebody's livelihood, obviously, and I mean, certainly I'm not looking at that. What I think we need to look at is what is best for everybody. Yes, the county has liability insurance, but should it be accessed because somebody got hurt when they were in the courthouse after hours, when a lot of this work can be done through the day in regular hours? And I know that the commission's looking at setting hours, definite hours for the courthouse. And yes, the doors open at 8:00 in the morning, but we have court security officers here at 8:00 in the morning. So when people start coming into the courthouse at regular hours or when the doors are open, we have security officers here. Commissioner Bartol made a very good point that if we continue to do this, to limit our liability and hold harmless agreement, I'm not sure how much good that will do because anybody can sue anybody for anything. And even if you have an agreement or a liability waiver, which we do for different things, you can still be sued. It's not an end-all for everything. But the thing that we would be looking at is increased manpower after hours. If we're looking at Monday nights, we're looking at a minimum of four hours to have somebody in the courthouse, when you may have an attorney or two come in between 5:00 and 11:00 p.m. So we're looking at four hours on Monday nights. Tuesday through Friday, we're looking at six hours each of those nights. So we're looking at a situation where we would have to have at least a couple court security officers here on each of those nights, if we keep the current plan in place, and the commission is looking at limiting their liability. That's what we would have to do. That's going to be taxing on our personnel, especially when we get to the point of, if we continue to leave it open after the new judicial annex is open, we're talking about not a few dollars, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars to hire additional personnel to do what needs to be done, to give the level of security that I think would be necessary in those situations, in those arenas. So obviously, you all have a tough decision, whatever you want to make. My point is, I'm looking at it from a liability issue for the county, I'm looking at it as a security issue for me and my department, and I understand what the attorneys are saying. Yes, they need access, yes, they need time to be in there and get their records, and I know it can be congested at times. But when you take everything in totality and the things that are happening throughout the country in courthouses, that's what we're looking at, and I think that's what we should be focusing on.
Thank you, sir. You're chomping at the bit.
Yeah, I am. First of all, whether you believe it or not, the three of us are glad that you're all here, because that's why I told Mrs. Wang that I wanted input because we have some real concerns, and she had some, voiced some concerns about what we want to do. When we talk about security, I think you've twisted it a little bit. It's not only security for you all, but while you're in the building, in that room, you don't see what's going on in the rest of the building. And that's the concern, where there's other people, I'm not sure how they got in, whether the door wasn't locked, whether they were able to get in or not, but we have other people working here who have seen them or confronted them. So that's why I'm saying security. It's also the employees that are currently in the building, and that's a liability that we're having. Now, again, please understand what I'm about to say because I'm sure I'm going to get booed. When we talk about fairness, I have a concern that, okay, you have 30 people. If there's 400 lawyers, and say I'm one of the individuals who needed help, and I'm not on this list, or I didn't get my lawyer who's on this list, they don't have the access that you have access after hours, and that worries me. Not even if I'm not, say I don't want to get a lawyer. Say, for example, I just want to go in and check the books myself. Now, I'm not competent to do that, but say someone else wanted to do that, they can't have the same access as you all. And I have a concern on that. That's something that I need, that I don't know how to address. Go ahead, sure.
Have any of the people that you're trying to protect from this system that has been in place for the last 50 years indicated that it's a concern to them?
Yes. In the last two weeks, I've had six different ladies tell me.
Could you identify those individuals?
Not at all. That would be inappropriate. I think that would be inappropriate. They work in the building, and they were thankful and...
No, sir, I'm addressing your second comment. Your first comment was that you have to protect us because other people are leaving the doors open. The second comment...
Well, you may be leaving the doors open. See, that's one of the concerns, we're not sure.
The only thing that we're allowed to use automatically closes and automatically locks is on a timer, there's a red light and a green light. It triggers a notice to him when the door opens, it triggers a notice to him when the door closes. You indicated that people are getting in other ways.
No, they're getting in the building. Now, look, I'm not here to debate, excuse me, I'm not here to debate. If you have a question, I'm more than willing to hear it.
My question is, who are the, of the attorneys who are not on this list that you would protect? Have any of them complained to you, and if so, could you tell them?
Oh, any of those attorneys, no. But as an individual saying they would want to have the same access, who may not want an attorney?
I believe that the courthouse rules are that the officers of the court are the only ones who are permitted access. And what I wanted to clarify, whether you were talking about the individual citizen who is not a member of the bar, who is sworn out and held to a much higher degree of accountability versus the 400 lawyers who don't do this kind of work, don't need into the record room. That's what I'm trying to find out.
Well, but, okay, again, my concern is, we all have a working hourly time period. Why aren't you doing it during the same time everyone else is able to access that? And I know you shake your head, well, you have other people who are there. Well, you know, I have a real concern that, I just believe that not everyone's being treated equally because they may or may not know that their lawyer can or cannot be accessed to go in there. There's only 30 people who use it out of 400 attorneys. My concern, for example, would be like, Mr. Cavendish, you mentioned that you can't get in access to Preston County. That makes an unfair advantage for someone else who can. And that's the concern I'm trying to state. Now, the third thing is, there's a trust factor. I mean, I'm sorry, but just like in every profession, there are good attorneys, there are bad attorneys, there are people who may or may not want to follow the rules. And I have real concerns that we need to be equitable. So if there is a way of possibly, you're wanting to leave hours open, say on a Monday and a Wednesday evening for a certain amount of time, fine, but then we're probably going to have to really charge a higher price, similar to what you charge us, a citizen, when you're asking them to do a search or a deed. So therefore, I just have real concerns, and I just don't think it's fair and equitable. And at the same time, I have a real concern about security and safety. And you come in there on a Friday night and you leave a package there, well, no one knows it's there. And you see what I'm saying? It's a concern. And yes, we've done it in the past because we've been very fortunate. But things are changing, and we want to make sure we have security, that it's equitable 24 hours a day. That's why we have put people, night staff, janitors, maintenance in the evening. That is why we're trying to change now meeting times, so that we're going to change it so we'll be now funneled through our office, so we know when you want to have a meeting or use the building, it's during when security is here. And that's what we're trying to do. Now, again, I understand your concern, but I haven't heard how we can resolve the issue. And that's still my question. It's a question, please. I'll let the other...
Rhetorical question?
It's a rhetorical.
Okay. We'll get back to you.
We'll get back to you, okay. Wait, until...
Commissioner Bartol.
Let me just comment something about security in a prison. You know, you can learn a lot about practices and strategies. The setting is not always necessary to define what's effective and what's not effective, but the procedure itself, and I alluded to that in the beginning, that security is not a procedure of personality, it's a procedure of procedures. The one thing that's very difficult, and I said this in the beginning, you know, to try to change a practice that's in existence is not an easy task. One of the things that's come to light here, and I never realized, that the impact to income that was realized by attorneys that have access, that was one of the reasons why, you know, I knew that... That was one of the reasons why, you know, I knew that there was a possibility that we would have things described that we may not be aware of. And before we would take a vote or get to that, that's one of the reasons why I asked that we deviate from our normal procedures and give you a chance to comment. We normally would have went right to the issue and you wouldn't have had an opportunity for comment until after we had voted. The one thing that seems to be missing here is a consideration is proactivity because it's never happened before. Do you take precautions to prevent it from ever happening or do you not do anything because it's never happened before? Sound security reasoning will tell you that you don't want to wait till it happens to implement procedures. That's typical government, knee-jerk reaction. One of the things this commission has tried to do is be proactive to prevent issues from happening. And you can't wait till things happen. Electronics, it was alluded to, well, you know, there's electronics and technology and all that. You know, there's very few things that were built that can't get around. You know, procedures will give you much more security than electronics and background checks because you... The security is built in to procedures. That's the strategy that you have with procedures. And believe me, I have some real mixed emotions on this issue. I mean, particularly after hearing some of the attorneys speak about the impact. The impact concerns me. But I can't help but be in a dilemma and say, well, if we don't do this, then what we got to do is we need to enhance security. We need to put someone in this building. Now, we've already taken some steps to put maintenance during the night in this building. We haven't taken steps to put maintenance in this building over the weekends. I don't, you know, without consideration to impact, one would say from a security standpoint, I don't think we have any choice but to regulate the hours of the courthouse, which statute gives us the authority to do, as the chief judge pointed out to us, that we regulate the hours of the courthouse. And the statute only allows for hours of the courthouse Monday through Friday. Doesn't allow for evening hours, doesn't allow for weekends. So we have that kind of dilemma too, if someone wanted to make an argument. I don't know. I mean, you know, one of the things that bothers me is the lateness of the notification and not knowing that this was coming up. And I'm not real sure that maybe it isn't more appropriate at this point in time, rather than to vote on the issue, is to give a little more time for input on this issue because obviously, it's been said, and there's no reason to doubt that, that the notification was very late. And give attorneys, other attorneys, and other people a chance for input on this issue so that we can make the one that is fully informed.
It's really scary that the three of us are starting to really think alike while you were talking.
I have the same thing.
That's what we just mentioned. Wait, we have an idea.
Just a second. Okay.
We have an idea.
I have a proposal, and I just ran it past Tom and Bill's input on it. I believe that, and I understand the sheriff's position, and like I said before, my gut reaction is to allow officers of the court to have access to these records and the importance of these records. That's my gut reaction. I understand the security issues, I understand everything the sheriff talked about, I understand all the issues that the other commissioners talked about. I believe, however, that a ban is, I think someone said draconian, and I think it is. What I am proposing is that we table this issue, and Commissioner Bloom has volunteered to take this assignment, that he would work with the attorneys in the room plus the local bar to deal with all the issues that Mr. Prunty had said that he wanted a little clarity on. That will give you an opportunity to get more clarity and work with the attorneys and deal with all the issues and come back with a proposal of how the issues can be resolved, but access can still be granted. And as Commissioner Bartolo said, that will give opportunity for other attorneys that may have not known that this was coming up.
There's two factors.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any problem with table on this, but there's two bits of information that I'd like to come back to this commission. One is the justification of officers of the court. What rationale, if any, that why attorneys as officers of the court should be permitted access that the general public wouldn't have of the courthouse? And I'd like that to be objective from a standpoint of rite of passage kind of thing. The second thing I'd like to know is what the cost would be to enhance security of the courthouse to cover those hours, other than regular duty hours, for use of the county clerk's office so that we will actually have some facts and figures in which to consider.
Yeah, that would be good. Yes, sir. Let's focus on the process now because we're done talking the issue.
The question is, is the cost of security to protect the courthouse from the attorneys, to protect the attorneys, we're both?
Everything. Everything we talked about today. And fortunately, it's on YouTube. You can watch everything and whatever one said. I want to deal, and that's what I've said from the beginning when this whole issue first came up, I want to deal with all the issues that's concerned so we can, as Bill said, be proactive and do what, do the right thing that's going to last into the future. So I think that this is what we need to do. We need to table this. And in the motion to table, we also include the motion to appoint Commissioner Bloom to work with the attorneys in the local bar, to work as a... What's the word I want to look for?
Liaison.
Well, as a liaison, as a brainstorming or committee or whatever, a working committee that will actually identify issues. You've got two issues here, there might be other issues attorneys have that they want to address and come back with a proposal as to what, if anything, or how we need to address the issues. And it would be good if the sheriff or the sheriff could appoint someone or designate someone to work with this group as you see fit. I think it would be good to have, so they can have your input in that group as well. Yes, Christine?
I just want to make sure that it's early hours, late hours, weekends, holidays, that we include all of that in the time.
Sure. Yeah, that's why I said everything.
And then secondly, I want to make sure you all understand. I think you, someone brought up, why do we have to come in during off-hours? And I just want to reiterate, you know, banks set a fee that you really can't go beyond for your title searches. And so if it takes, because there's that set fee, if it takes you 10 hours to do it because you're waiting around, that's all you're making still. You can't raise your prices. There's a certain point where you can't go. It's not like billable hours for somebody that's doing a civil litigation or something else where you can just keep billing hour after hour. It doesn't work that way. And everybody gets paid before the real estate lawyers. You know, your surveyors get paid, your appraisers get paid, your inspections get paid. If a piece of property doesn't close, no one gets paid. They don't make anything. And so, and I don't know, what's the percentage of properties that don't close after you run a title search? I mean, and so you're just not making any money. I mean, I don't think people realize that, that it doesn't work, you know, like...
That's why they do oil and gas because they charge by the hour.
That's why I do oil and gas on top of doing the other stuff because I can't make a living.
On just doing the time.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All those issues is what I want this working committee to work out. Does that sound acceptable to the attorneys here?
If I get it clear, I'd appreciate, since there's going to be probably two of us, no more than five attorneys. You know, if we make it too big, then I think it'll be too large. At the same time, we would come up with a compromise, come back to a work session.
Yeah.
Where we would then discuss it, so then it wouldn't be brought up right away. And if you could send a memo out to your group...
Bar.
Let me suggest something.
Go ahead.
When the bar association meets, I don't know when the next meeting of the county bar association is, why don't you attend that meeting?
That would be good.
With all the attorneys and get input from the bar association as a group.
Ms. Prunty?
Would it be unreasonable to request that this court's order be sent to the 30 people on the list so they know what's occurred? Since they're the ones holding...
Oh, there's a motion, a copy of the motion. We can send a copy of the motion.
Or an email.
The establishment of the organization to the 30 people on the list.
Or email, whichever.
We'll include that in their motion. Well, we could send an email. Send notice. We'll just include in the motion, we'll send notice to the 30 people on the access list. Yes, sir, Mr. Kavanaugh?
Just a point, and not of argument, the reason why you only have 30 out of 400 is there is no money to be made in...
Right. Well, I didn't want to discuss the issue anymore. The fact of the matter is...
I'm learning that, okay.
The fact of the matter is, is that 30 is not a magic number. If there were 10 more that wanted to apply, they could come along.
Oh, everybody could apply, but they had no reason to come along.
They have no reason.
And I think that's what the three of us, you know, one thing I'm learning is that just because I'm quoted county commissioner, I don't have all the information. And you're never too old to keep learning. And I think Bill and I heard some things that we may not agree with, but we heard legitimate arguments. So that's why we want to come up with the compromise, which is let's work together because we do have a problem with security. We need your help and we need some way of making sure and also make it cost-effective and, you know, not prohibited when we have two different buildings. And that's the concern I have.
Okay. Do I have a motion to table this along with the motion to appoint Commissioner Bloom to work with a working committee with the state bar as well as for the sheriff to appoint a designated, a designated to that committee that the, or not the state bar, the local bar, that the local bar and Commissioner Bloom will organize as they see fit to come back later with a suggestion in work session.
Right.
Along with a notice being sent to all attorneys on the, on the access, the 30 attorneys are on the access code now, that this working group is being established and that Commissioner Bloom, if it's acceptable to the bar, will attend the next bar meeting to explain what he's trying to do. Did I include everything?
I still move.
Got anything, Bill?
No, I'm just trying to figure out what all you said.
Basically, we're going to have a working committee to decide how to resolve these...
I understand. I understand. I'll second it.
I have a motion to the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you very much.
Could I just ask, who should be the designated person to... Could you have one person contact me?
Prunty, Mr. Prunty.
Do we get boxing gloves? No.
I don't know if he's on the list.
We have the list.
We got the list. It's public, it's public record.
I can give you the list.
Here, Steve. Steve, give me that list.
Yes, Steve.
Hey, Steve?
Steve, here you go.
Here, you have my list.
Mail addresses for all those people to me, please.
Your name, owner, owner.
That's a group that always went against me, but...
Oh. Is that right? Okay, all right. That took some time.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, acceptance of agreement, transferring property to WVU. Okay, what this is, is...
Have some room.
Okay, we're back in session here, please. What this is, is when they changed, what's that road?
Elmer Prince Drive.
When they changed Elmer Prince Drive around and the access to Campbell, the other drive came, they had to chip, they did swapping of property, the county back in 2001, 2002, that where the, they expanded the road, four lane in Elmer Prince Drive, which took a big chunk of the property in front of the building now used by the youth services center that belongs to the county. And they gave some land in the back in exchange. The exchange was done, the places were built, and everything, there was not, the deeds were never executed, both the deed from the university to the county, given the back portion, nor the deed where the road runs in front of the youth service center is now given that to the university. So to correct this oversight and talking with Diane, we thought it was best, given the fact that all this took place in 2002, and none of us, it was here in 2002, we should make it an official part of the record that we are now correcting that oversight and seek a motion to authorize me to sign this deed, transfer in that part. And they have the deed, I talked to Gary Furby this morning, attorney for WVU, they have the deed that they will be signing, giving us the back portion. And then he will come by and pick them up and file them all, make sure we get the original deed back, the original deed back to our new parcel. So that's what we have to do here.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion to the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passed. Thank you. Any further new business? Okay, hearing done. Commissioner Bartolo, report from the commissioner?
We've got a planning commission meeting, I think, this evening. It's the second Wednesday, isn't it?
Yes.
Of course, we sort of gave them three assignments, and I hope to get a status report on that this evening in regard to where they're at on them.
Very good.
Other than that, just one comment. You talked about training and motivators and there's a psychologist called Hertzberg who did a study on job enrichment. I used to do a little training myself.
Yeah, you did.
And one of the things that he derived out of his studies was that money was a very short-term motivator. Everybody wanted money, but after they got it, it didn't have any motivation for them. And the biggest job enrichment thing was the working conditions. You know, the kind of chair that people sat in, the kind of office surroundings that they worked in, how they were treated as an employee. Those were the considerations of motivation for employees. So I just wanted to reinforce what you said.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much. Ms. Bloom?
Yeah, I just want to mention that I did take a trip with Mark Music and several others to not only Preston County, but also before I had gone to Waynesburg and Green County. And I was able to look at the GIS system that they had, also the mapping system that they were working on connected to the 911 system. And it was a real enlightenment for me, basically because I admit, and I told them, I was not really for the proposals initially for what we had opened up those bids on. But, and I know we're going to discuss it during the work session, but what I came away with was how antiquated our system is in Montegia County. And what we really need to do is get back to square one. And that was, you know, building foundation. And unfortunately, I'm just amazed at these other smaller areas that have less local, you know, mileage, you know, our whole county is so much smaller than us, but they had so much better programs. And really, I can't even imagine how a person goes in and looks at a map, and if it's on four different maps, you have to put the maps together and so on. And I really think that this in the long run is going to be really helpful and accountable information and more of a fair market value. So that I think it will benefit everyone from the start. And as I stated before, I believe in economic development, and I believe maybe this is one of the avenues we're going to have to look at for economic development. And we'll talk about that later. But it was really interesting of how they use it and how it could benefit the city. But it was really interesting of how they use it and how it could benefit the citizens. So I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, thank you. I just got, I got a couple of things. I want to, I understand we definitely have a bus for Montague Day on January 9th. And they should, anyone interested in going down on the 9th for Montague Day at the legislature, needs to call Sharon at the Chamber of Commerce and sign up for the bus. It will be fantastic to have a lot of people. And anyone's welcome to go. They're going to go down that morning and back. There's going to be another, a lot of local groups are going to have tables set up, and various things from Montague County, emphasizing Montague County. An interesting fact that's come out is that, and we all know how bad our transportation is, somehow we magically fell on the same day that the legislature's transportation day. Montague County Day, transportation day is the same day. So I want to encourage everyone to put that in their plans and be there. The more people will be recognized, the more people there, the better, to really show how united and forward-thinking all the leaders, not only the leaders, but all the people in the county are to make things better. The other thing I wanted to mention is, you all are invited to, everyone's invited, there's a, the neighborhood investment program, that, what that involves, it's a tax credit program, and what that does is, if you give, say you get, you've got to give a minimum of $500, but say you give $1,000 to your favorite charity, and the charities are, these are issued from the tax office, you get an automatic $500 credit towards your taxes, right off the bat. Plus, if you, and if you itemize deductions, you could take $1,000 off of both your federal and state taxes. So it's a program that was, has been adopted for some time, it's becoming more and more use, adopted by the state to encourage contributions to charitable organizations. Main Street Morgantown is hosting a reception that everyone's invited to, to basically get together and talk about how the, these, what they call NIP, NIP, tax credits work, and learn about how both an individual and businesses can benefit from these tax credits. So I think it's good that people know this, this is a time, this is a time you need to think about how to reduce your tax benefit and help out a charity. Main Street Morgantown's hosting it, but I also acknowledge that all the charities have some level of NIP tax credits that they got to give out. So I encourage people to attend this.
What day is that?
December 17th, it's coming Tuesday, from 4:30 to 6:00 over at Arts Monongahela Building, and it'll be a very nice little reception. I've been bouncing around a lot of things in the last couple of days, because I've been quite ill for a couple of months. And I can't believe that I'm actually making meetings now, and know what they're talking about. I was making meetings before and didn't know what they were talking about. But I'm going to leave it at those two things right now, and we've got our meeting tomorrow night with the municipal, the municipal group. I think that's becoming a very, very good group. We got that tomorrow, tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock in the sheriff's office. Okay, Mark, do you have anything for us?
Just our new appraisers will be starting this Monday, the 16th.
Right.
They'll be coming on board. And just to kind of touch base with Commissioner Bloom, I was saying, you know, for either yourself, President Calhoun, or Commissioner Bartolo, if you would like to go to Preston County. Carmen Irwin is the mapper there, she just does a wonderful job with her presentation. And just, you know, they've been very helpful to us when we've gone there, or even just corresponding with them on some questions, but we would love to do that. And she loves hosting.
Yeah.
Other people coming down, but she takes a little pride. She kind of did that on her own. She kind of built this thing to do, the assistance of somebody else.
I'd like to go to Preston County, but I have to check with my wife, because she works up there, and I got to get her approval before I enter the county.
But I wanted to toss that on there, too, both of you gentlemen.
Thank you. Sheriff, you have anything further?
I've got a few, but I'll be quick, because I have another meeting in New York. Mark and I attended the governor's Christmas party this past Saturday, his wife, my wife, his brother and his wife all went down and attended that party. Then I had to be back in Charleston for a meeting Monday with Association of Counties' Executive Board, and then Tuesday with the State Sheriff's Association. And one of the things we did on Tuesday morning at 10:30 at the Capitol, we, through the State Sheriff's Association, we have a program called Invest, and I think I explained it to you several months ago, that we were doing a fund for the State Sheriff's Association to buy ballistic vests for deputies in counties that couldn't afford. As you know, our legislature last year passed a law that said each county commission would supply deputies with a ballistic vest once they were certified and graduated from the state police academy. We're in a very fortunate situation here, because you always give us money in our budget to cover that, so we don't have to come back and ask you to take care of that expense. Some counties aren't that fortunate. So we started this program through the State Sheriff's Association, and yesterday was the first giveaway of those vests to Monroe County, Mineral County, and Work County. So I think there were, in total, 17 vests that were donated to those departments through this fund. And through the Association of Counties, as you know, I serve as the president this year, we'll be going to Washington, DC, January 8th, for the National Association of Counties Meeting, that involves the presidents and executive directors of the state Association of Counties organization. So I'm told by Patty Hamilton, it's a pretty big deal, so I guess I have to wear a suit.
Well, that's January 8th.
January 8th.
You're going to have your office represented down at Montague County by someone?
There will be somebody there. You'll probably see Perry Palmer, Kelly, you know...
Gary, he's standing right there.
Gary may, he may be the driver, too.
That would be good, too.
And lastly, but certainly not least, I know we've been in this process for several months now, but we have made conditional job offers to two new deputies, I don't want to say conditional job officers, offices, offers, Jesus, slow down, Ron. They have completed their physical agility testing, both have passed. They have completed their background investigation, and they are in the process now of their psychological testing, IQ testing, and full physical. Once those things are completed, and they come back fine, then we will make them a full offer, and at that point, we'll bring them in front of the commission to authorize those hires. But we are making some good progress, and we're hoping, off of wood, that we'll be able to get them, once they're hired, into the academy. The new academy starts January 6th, and we'd like to get them in. We've already made some preliminary inquiries of the deputy commandant, and we hope that we'll be able to get both of them in. So that's all.
Thank you very much.
Can I add one thing to mine?
Yes, Mark.
I forgot, last Friday, myself, Chuck, and Jeff, we attended a, kind of a techno fair up in PA, up in Green Tree, with ComDoc, a bit of company we used, some, we've leased a new machine from, kind of advancing our office more into the future, some things we could do, become less paperless. But the three of us went up there, it was very helpful, very educational, for some of the things that I think, what they're going to try to present further down the road, how we can advance our office a little further, that can benefit our taxpayers from doing more stuff online, and maybe less time coming in, having to do that. But Jeff was with us, and the other thing, too, is I just want to thank Jeff, he's been very helpful to us here, still continuing to work on our webpage to increase it, make it better, and just his input on some of the stuff, and he went with us also, running to Preston County. He's been very helpful, and I just wanted to make sure I got that passed along, because I know the sheriff is here. I want to make sure he knows that.
Okay, thank you. Ron, do you have anything for us?
No, sir, don't.
Okay. Diane, do you have anything further? Bobby? Jamie?
Yes, sir.
Okay, comments from the public? You have any comments from public? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Mitch Prozick, I'm with Security US.
Okay.
We're a local security and fire line company, and I'm addressing you regarding the upcoming bid for the new judicial building. We have contacted Siling Associates, the engineering, architectural engineering firm...
Yes.
...in trying to get matches for our product, for the products that have been selected by them for you. And to this point, we can't get anything pre-qualified. They're telling us that the only way that we can do substitute products is after the bid is done. And there's not any general or electrical that's going to come in after the fact. Under normal business circumstances, if somebody has an as-equal, it's pre-qualified beforehand, not after the fact. One of the things I wanted to address was, for example, in the closed-circuit television system, you've got two people or two companies in the state that can provide this service, one being Electronic Specialty, the other New Tech, which are both located in Charleston. For the Bosch security system, you've got Electronic Specialty, New Tech, the other closest ones are either in Pittsburgh or Parkersburg. For the access control, which is Linnell, you've got the same, you've got Electronic Specialty, the other ones are located in Pittsburgh, Frederick, or Alexander, Virginia, if you ever have an issue with these things. When it comes to the fire system, you've got Simplex, Edwards, Edwards again is represented by New Tech and Electronic Specialty. My company is local, we've got over 50 employees, we have a central station, we do a lot of work in large projects throughout the region. We are the Honeywell representative, some of the products or some of the main projects that Honeywell's done in the past include Johnson &amp; Johnson, Goldman Sachs, Citigroup, DuPont. We also do several other counties in the region, and of course, we did the closed-circuit television system at the new sheriff's department. One other thing that you may consider is being able to get on one platform and continuing to build on that platform for the county. For example, I think the sheriff has Ingersoll Rand, is that correct, as access control? Now you're going to put Linnell in a different place, you've got Honeywell, now you're going to go Avonlong or Avignon on the CCTV. None of these systems integrate at this point, there's no way to lay over top. So if you would continue to use the products that you have, it's going to be more integrated capabilities, so that the sheriffs or the 911 center will be able to put it on one platform and continue to use it, rather than one platform for one building, another platform for another building. So what I'm guessing, I'm asking you to do, is to instruct Siling and Associates to at least come in and rate Honeywell as an as-equal, so we have the opportunity to bid this project also.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Hearing done, that motion is adjourned?
Move for adjourned. Second.
I have a motion to second all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.